Oops. Welcome to today's July 6, 2017 business meeting. And today we have Laurel Butman, Deputy County Administrator. Please take the role.
Certainly, I would like first to acknowledge our county council, Stephen Madcor, and here with us today as well as Mary Rathke, our clerk to the board. Role call, Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Let's start with.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Savas.
Here.
And Chair Bernard.
Here. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item up is citizen communication, and we have Les Poole. Haven't seen you since before the holidays.
I've been thinking about you. Les Poole, Gladstone. As you all know, I've talked to you till I'm blue in the face, and you're probably blue in the face about the transportation bill, and it's moving forward in Salem. And I just want to thank everyone that's worked on trying to whittle that thing down. It started as an $8 billion monstrosity. I think there's an underlying current there, and that is that ODOT needs to change some priorities. And hopefully, with the money that looks like it's coming for local roads and some help, the county does everything they can to devote a lot of that to maintenance and taking care of what we have because we've got that huge backlog that everyone knows about. In fact, last, I guess I was here last week. I mentioned, I referenced the possibility of 60-unit-per-acre zoning at Park Avenue. And the chair asked me where I heard of that, and I remembered where I heard of it, and I went back and watched a video from last March. And that's when the planning department had a hearing, and the hearing was about their future works, their long-range work program. And in that, a couple of the folks from Oak Grove mentioned 60-unit-per-acre housing. And my point is not to get up here and debate what density should be at Park Avenue. My point is that we need to look at Park Avenue as constrained opportunity and as a unique geographic place. And currently, it's zoned 25 units per acre for what I saw in the video that I watched again. And I don't know what the number is going to be there in the future, but we all know the development community in Tri-Met and interests want as much density as they can there. Well, how much is appropriate is the question that needs to be answered. So hopefully, I won't be blown off about that in the future. One last point. I just want to say that summer's here. I'm going to be at the fair. I'm a big fair supporter. Probably went 20 years of my life where the fair didn't matter to me. But when you're a kid, the fair is awesome. You get a little bit older, and the fair is awesome. So those 20 years in between that I missed, that was my mistake. But Clackamas County has the best darn fair. I appreciate that the extension, the 4H and extension budget was passed in last week. And I look forward to seeing you all out there. And I promise you that I will not be wearing a tie. I'll have on different attire, and hopefully you will too. Is there a chance you're going to have a meeting out there like you've done before?
Sure we are, yeah.
That'd be great. It's good outreach for you folks and for everybody, and it makes you more real to the people that see you on TV. I've got three seconds left. Looks like I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and that's all we have on citizen communication. The next item is public and government affairs. We have Gary Schmidt, who's going to talk to us about a resolution.
Yes, Commissioners, I'm here today to seek your approval for a resolution reaffirming Clackamas County's commitment to combat climate change. This is based on three previous board actions that prior Board of County Commissioners have made. And they are, in 2008, the board approved an action plan for a sustainable Clackamas County, which had seven goals, and this is listed in your resolution, by the way. Those seven goals are to become carbon neutral, support energy efficiency, support green standards for development and infrastructure, protect and restore lands, water, and air that support natural systems. The second action was in 2014 when the Board of County Commissioners approved Performance Clackamas and set one of the high strategic goals of honor, utilize, promote, and invest in our natural resources. The third action was in 2016. The Clackamas County Commissioners passed a resolution adopting a county energy policy and goals, which included by in 2016, reducing, I'm sorry, reducing 2016 energy usage by five percentage points by the year 2020. So this resolution affirms those three prior actions this board has taken and to make a statement to the public and the community that this county is committed to working together with our community to reinforce practices and policies within county government and throughout the community that responds to the need to combat and adapt to climate change for the sake of the future of our residents and our economy. That is the resolution before you today. Commissioner Savas had some additional edits to the resolution, which I'm calling version two. You have seen that. It's before you today. There is red text for what the additional changes are. I'm afraid it was not posted to the county website, but I do have paper copies if anyone in the room here would like to see it. If I may, I'm happy to read what those additions are, or if Commissioner Savas wanted to do that. Would you like me to do that?
Yeah, why don't you go ahead, Gary, and I'll add to that.
Okay, so the additions to the resolution are, whereas the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration tracks global climate conditions and cycles and temperature change, and whereas carbon dioxide is a life-supporting and naturally occurring component of our ecosystem, and whereas pollutants such as nitrogen oxides and carbon monoxide are harmful to human health. Then adding to the therefore actions, advocate for cleaner emission fuel systems such as compressed natural gas and publicly-owned buses such as transit agencies and school districts. So Commissioners, there are two versions of a resolution, the original version in your staff report, which I call version one, version two, which is with the edits I just suggested that were from Commissioner Savas. So I'm seeking your approval of either version one or version two, or a third version you may choose to make today.
You want to?
Yeah, Chair Bernard, because I have a pending appointment, and I wasn't even supposed to be here, but I'm actually pushing the envelope on my time allotment because I really wanted to make a pitch to have this language added. I think it's important, I'm more of a pragmatist, and my experience in my business and being, having really pragmatic solutions towards, and air quality has been a really important part of what I have done. And I understand, you know, and I think if you go, anyone goes to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric, the NOAA website, you'll see all the work and see what the trends are and as far as temperature change and where we've been and whichever snapshot of time people want to look at. And you go see there's a trend going upwards, but there's also ups and downs of that. So without getting into the details of that, I really think it's really important that we actually kind of actually do what we can and do what's feasible and practical in a very pragmatic and cost-effective way and actually help with the benefit of people's health in Oregon as opposed to trying to do things that maybe we don't have really a tangible benefit. I think the, especially the therefore, and I'll read it again, advocate for cleaner emission fuel systems such as compressed natural gas and publicly-owned buses and such as transit agencies and school districts is something that's important, and we'll see a benefit here for the health and welfare. Remember, folks, school buses and garbage trucks drive through our neighborhoods, and where our neighborhoods are, our families are. And I've seen a lot of our privately-owned garbage waste haulers convert to natural gas. So they were already ahead of the game. I just came back from a trip in Los Angeles County. All of the buses that were formerly diesel-powered, all natural gas or electric-powered, they've already made a 100% conversion. We're behind the eight ball, and I think this is something that Oregon could be to do. And I know that Speaker Kotek has sponsored a bill, and I think it's, I've been hearing it's been having its ups and downs, but it's probably going to pass, and it's back on there. But I think this is something we can advocate for. I think there needs to be benefit. If we're going to benefit for Argonians and benefit for those in Clackamas County, I think this is one way of getting there. And I want to get away from the confusion. I think it gives us credibility if we really identify that, for example, NOAA, which is a huge database and does a lot of work around the globe as regards to climate conditions and tracking. I think those are just important elements that add some credibility and some resource into what the facts are as best we can in a very complex thing. So that's my pitch. I've got a few minutes left before I'll leave. But if I do get up and leave, it's because of my appointment that I'm, again, pushing for, so.
So I have a couple of comments. I really can't support your resolution. I don't, I'm okay with the therefore, but I think that the whereas the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration suggests that this is a normal condition. Temperature rises in the world have accelerated rapidly. I mean, most of the ice is disappearing. And then the second one, carbon dioxide is life-supporting. Absolutely right, it is. But it's also the most significant, long-lived greenhouse gas in the Earth's atmosphere. Since the Industrial Revolution, emissions primarily from use of fossil fuels and deforestation have rapidly increased its concentration in the atmosphere, leaving, leading to global warming. Carbon dioxide causes ocean acidification because it also dissolves in water. So while it is true, it's not the whole story on what carbon dioxide is. And that part, I really have a problem with. As far as such as nitrogen oxide, I mean, those are, I mean, I don't have a problem with that one. But the first and the second, whereas, I do have a problem with.
Okay, well, let's, I know we were, as opposed to just inserting this as we agreed to a week ago, we're going to talk about it today. So here we are, and I've got a couple of minutes left. So I, if you go to the, you probably didn't go to NOAA, but if you go to the NOAA website, you'll see, they're not saying anything is normal. I mean, there's no statement in there. Matter of fact, it's to the contrary.
I think what you say says that.
How's that? Where it says whereas the National, tracks global conditions, cycles.
Tracking global climate conditions, cycles, and temperature change.
Yeah, that's what they, that's what they, that's what they.
You're suggesting that temperature change is cycling. It is cycling, but it's also going up.
It says that. Go to the website, it says that.
But I don't say that in the whereas.
Well, I didn't say that it, whereas it say otherwise. What is it, how does it say the way you're saying? I don't, I'm not following your logic.
I'm saying that it's only part of the story. And this is part of the story, the two whereases.
I don't understand your logic on the first one. I mean, I could get where you want to strike the whereas on the carbon dioxide. I can get there on that one, but, but NOAA, I mean, that's what they do. I mean, it's changing all the time. But it's trending upwards. It says that right on the website.
Well, then, let's put in trending upwards.
Temperature change, so what would your wordsmithing be?
Well, track. Yeah, we have some other people. Let's see what they have to say first, okay? So who was up first? I think Sonya was.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. First of all, I want to commend Commissioner Savas for bringing this to light because it's very important. The key goal that I had in bringing this to our policy session was to raise awareness. And just going through the process of putting together this climate resolution has done that amongst all of us. And my goal, and I believe it's shared by all of us on the commission, is to highlight the importance that every person, that we do all we can as individuals to reduce our carbon footprint, and also that we do everything that we can to understand and learn what we need to do individually and collectively because it's our planet that's at stake and is most important. What we have talked about is doing a resolution that is very basic, which affirms our values, that does not get into specifics, but that we also, when we present this to the press, and I know that we have the press here today with Peter Wong here, that we give more specifics in the press release so that the press can decide if they would like to highlight more specifics. One thing that I absolutely support as part of what Commissioner Savas is suggesting when he does the now and therefor's, and he has a sentence here that says, advocate for cleaner emissions fuel systems such as compressed natural gas, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, onward. I would suggest a simpler statement that says, support efforts to encourage the use of new lower-emission technologies and public buses such as those operated by transit agencies and school districts. Just so that our communication is simple and clear and that we are asserting our values in our resolution. So that would be my suggestion on how to get through this. Keep the resolution as original, but add Commissioner Savas's concept in just some simpler language.
And with that, I'm going to partway, part company here.
Okay, I think Martha or Ken, who was it?
Martha was first.
Martha. Thank you, Paul.
Thanks, Commissioner Savas. So just want to point out some of the science piece here because I do have some background in that. And it's not the fact that climate cycle and change, that's a natural process. The issue, underlying assumption is, or the science debate, is that emissions are accelerating and disrupting a natural cycle. Okay, so, yeah, we have ice ages, we have that. There's no, there's wide agreement that climate changes over time. It's the science that is documenting, whether you believe it or not, you know, but it's documentation that there's an acceleration of the cycle due to man-made impacts. Okay, so that really is what the discussion is about. I'm, I can go with either version. I have to tell you, it doesn't concern me talking about NOAA because that's what they do. They track climate change, conditions and cycles and temperature change. CO2 is a life-supporting and naturally occurring component of our ecosystem. And, I mean, all of this makes sense to me from a strictly science background. And I would suggest, if it's not the commission's will to include it in this and have it more of a broad stroke, that all of these points at some point in time be somehow inculcated into a larger policy, I guess. I think that's what I'm hearing. But I have to tell you, these are quite accurate statements. They're not inaccurate. And no one is saying that the climate doesn't change. It's the man-made impact that's under discussion here, which personally, from my perspective and my science background, I think the data is pretty clear that that seems to be, that that is actually happening, that our man-made impact is causing an acceleration. Because you're seeing, rather than gradual changes, you know, which is how the ecosystem normally works, okay? You're seeing extremes from one to the other. But the NOAA data is really important as we track what is exactly happening. So I hope that explains it. So I will go with either version, but I really think that those points are accurate. And if they're not included in this, somehow they have to be part of either a press release or a broader conversation of how we do and use our policies. But there's nothing here that, for me, strikes a red flag, but.
Ken.
So you guys choose the, you guys choose the version, but I'm okay with both of them.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to make it clear that the people who are expert in climate science, with that group, there is virtually no debate about the facts of global warming and what is causing it. It isn't a matter of a belief system any more than gravity is about belief, it's about facts. So it doesn't make any difference what people believe. It only makes a difference in terms of what the facts on the ground are. The facts are that we are putting carbon into the atmosphere at an excessive level, releasing it from, not only from the fuels that we use, but also because of global warming, finding that the tundras in the northern reaches of our planet are also releasing methane, which is even more toxic. And this is accelerating actually faster than they initially anticipated occurring. So whatever we can do, it would be beneficial. The specific statement about whereas carbon dioxide is a life-supporting and naturally occurring component of our ecosystem, on its face is true, but it suggests that somehow that's perfectly okay. The reality is an excessive carbon dioxide will kill you. There's a lot of naturally occurring gases that if you get too many of them in the atmosphere, they can kill you. So the implication here is that somehow it's perfectly okay to have carbon dioxide in excessive amounts in the atmosphere. My reading of the literature suggests that that is not the case. And certainly what we're seeing on the ground around the world, where we see islands such as the Maldives going underwater, the tundras accelerating their melting and not freezing as fast. It's taking over three months to refreeze where it used to take less than a month to refreeze in the wintertime, allowing more methane to escape, which is accelerated by carbon dioxide. So I have a problem with that one being in there. I agree with Commissioner Fisher's language with respect to the therefore at the bottom. I have no problem. I think that's a good way of rephrasing Commissioner Savas's comments there. The comment regarding pollutants such as nitrous, nitrogen oxide, et cetera, can remain. I don't have a problem with that one either. And I think the one about the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration's just irrelevant to our general discussion, quite frankly. I don't think it needs to be there. In terms of what Commissioner Schrader commented on, I think the specifics of what we can and should do should be in our policies, not in a resolution. So I would look forward to having staff bring to us some specific policy recommendations of things that we can do as we go forward. But in terms of the resolution, I would support Ms. Fisher's language and in the therefor's, support leaving the whereas regarding pollutants in, and strike the whereas with respect to carbon dioxide. If we want to keep the National Oceanographic and Atmospheric Administration comments in, I would add the following, and it would read as such. Whereas the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA, tracks global climate conditions and cycles in temperature change, it notes that global warming is trending upwards. So you would add the language, it notes that global warming is trending upwards. And because then the point of citing NOAA is made by adding that to it. That's the culmination of my comments. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Okay.
If we do want to keep the National Oceanic and Atmospheric tracks global climate conditions that are trending upward, I mean, we could just say that and make it simpler.
Mm-hmm.
Or we can, if we want to keep that. But I would suggest that we keep it simpler. And I think it's implied in our resolution, but I, we don't need to take more time. We can just decide what we want to do.
Besides, we have to wait for the public and hear from them, so.
Yeah, they can weigh in on all of this and advise us on how we should be.
So Commissioner Fisher graciously took the lead on this. So whatever you wish with this because you have good, solid judgment. And I know the intent from what this has done. But just a few, just, but Ken, I have to respond to a couple of things you said. Okay, the reason why the NOAA data is important is because it gives us a baseline for change, okay? And they have the baseline, and they see it changing. Climate changes is part of a natural cyclic process. Everything in the ecosystem has a cyclic process, okay? Carbon dioxide is a life-supporting and naturally occurring component of our ecosystem. It is. The issue is that because we've been using petroleum fuels that we have and that we've been emitting the materials outside of a natural cyclic process, that that has caused an impact to the cycle. Carbon dioxide is part of a natural process. You know, that's, that is true. But if it's confusing to people to have that in there as if there's something wrong with carbon dioxide, I guess you could take it out. The issue is that we have artificially overput the cycle out of whack by emitting more than what the natural cycle had done. That's what the issue is there. And I just, I just want to say NOAA is important because they give us the baseline. Okay, I could see where people would get confused because then they're thinking, well, carbon dioxide is okay. In the natural cycle, it's perfectly fine. We're dealing with cycles that are out of whack, and that's what the real issue is. So that's the clarity there, okay? I just want to, yeah.
I think that's kind of what I said, but you put it in different words, but that's okay.
I don't know, you know, I mean, I think that, you know, just because there's carbon dioxide in the atmosphere, but it's the, it's the.
It's the excess.
It's the, it's an excess more than likely based on, or I think it's highly likely, when you look at the data, based on human activity. That's what we're talking about. But it is a naturally occurring piece.
So go park in your garage, turn your car on, shut the door, and tell me it's natural. It weighs more than oxygen. It'll push the oxygen out of you, and you will die. Now, two, that's because there's too much.
Because that is, because that's unnatural, is what I just said. The system, the system, system is out of whack.
Right.
There, we are producing, but in a natural carbon cycle that we all learn in elementary school, carbon dioxide is released by trees. Or wait a minute, they take in carbon dioxide and release oxygen. Sorry. But they take it and they clean up the atmosphere. But it's a natural occurring.
Yes, it is, but it's only half the story. I mean, it's half the story.
I know, but.
And if you're going to have half the story.
But I've also said, there's the fuller story of it is the cycle is out of whack because of man-made.
I know, but having it in the resolution, the way it looks, it sounds like it's just great. So it's not just great.
Okay, I just, I'm fine with taking it out.
Okay, so let's.
But I'm just trying to clarify that if it's confusing to people, if it's confusing to people, then you should take it out. And that's what I'm hearing from you folks.
Okay, let's go to the public. So Lisa, I'm sorry, I can't read the last name on here. And also Sandy. Lisa and Sandy Polashuk.
Halashek.
Halashek, close. I'm terrible at this. All right, go ahead, Lisa.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Lisa Dotto, and I'm the chair of the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network. And I've got the full board here. Duke Castle, Jan Castle, Dorothy Atwood, and Mary Ratcliffe. We're a sustainability group, private group in Lake Oswego. We've got about 550 people on our mailing list. And we have eight or nine action teams working on sustainability, lots of different projects. We work with the schools and bike lanes and energy and community solar, many different things. We have many events that are widely attended in Lake Oswego and a variety of projects. And so I would like to tell you how supportive and grateful I am that you have this resolution. We think it's terrific. And we fully support the resolution that reaffirms the county's commitment to combat climate change. Three years ago, we worked with the county staff to help craft the leaders. Three years ago, we worked with the county staff to help craft the leaders in a sustainability certification program, and now we have 20 businesses in Lake Oswego that have got, become certified. Like you, we see the threat of climate change as one of the biggest challenges we face, and we would like to be working with you and supportive of this effort. The good news is that thousands of cities and counties around the country are working on climate change, and actually lots of the action is at the level of local government right now. The city of Lake Oswego has been very active, and we know Portland and Multnomah County, counties around the state are working on this issue. Also, people might not be aware of how much has been accomplished already. In Oregon, we are on track to reduce carbon from our electricity system over time, and reduce coal. We have huge numbers of jobs throughout the state that are related to clean energy, and people are saving money, improving health with those efforts. We believe that climate change is a difficult issue, it can be complicated, there's a lot of ways to be confusing about it, and people don't always know what to do. We know from talking to a lot of our citizens in Lake Oswego that there's a lot of emotion around climate change, many people are very worried and sort of deeply concerned about it, especially young people, but sometimes it's difficult to take that concern and worry and then translate that into what actions to take. One of the things that we did in Lake Oswego is, we wanted to get people to start thinking about what, you know, about the issue and what it meant to them, and so we did a writing project, we called it the Story Project, and we sent out a message to our fellow citizens, oh dear, well, basically inviting them to write about climate change and what it meant to them. I can take that. And sorry, I brought, we had these all published later, they go review, publish them.
Okay.
We brought copies, we have some additional copies. Finally, I know I'm over my time, but I would like to say that I, I support the language that Mr. Humerson mentioned, I think it is more clear and less confusing, so we, we would like to see that clarity, so thank you very much.
Go ahead.
Chair Bernard and Commissioners, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Sandy Polashuk, I co-lead 350 PDX's fossil fuel divestment reinvestment team, and I also serve on the Board of 350 PDX. We are a grassroots organization, a part of an international movement to organize, to combat climate change. I want to compliment you on this resolution to reaffirm your commitment to combat climate change. As you know, climate change isn't just any issue, it's an issue of survival, so we're very glad to know you're on board. It's my first time here at the Clackamas County Commission meeting, and I'm so happy to see that there are no climate deniers among you, that you're all people who accept science. I also want to invite you to consider joining the growing fossil fuel divestment movement with the idea that it isn't okay to be invested in companies that are driving problems that we're working to solve. This movement is only four and a half years old, but it is the fastest-growing divestment movement in history. There are already approximately $500, $5.42 trillion of divestment commitments made by institutions. In Oregon, this includes Eugene, Corvallis, Metro, Ashland, Portland, Multnomah County, as well as Oregon State University, Western Oregon University, Portland Community College, the University of Oregon Foundation, and these are just government, there's plenty of private, non-government entities. We'd very much like to work with you and help you take this next step, including showing you that you can do so without shirking your fiduciary responsibilities, and get your investments in line with your values. In the meantime, congratulations on this move you're making today, and thank you. I also, in addition to what I prepared ahead, I hadn't seen these new whereases, and I agree that the second one is, I would say, incomplete. I don't think the fact that carbon dioxide is life-supporting and naturally-occurring is pertinent to this issue. What is pertinent is that since industrial times, we've been putting too much and in, and if, into the atmosphere, and if you want to maintain a livable climate, we need to act quickly and decisively. Also, if I can, just a few seconds more, I would like to urge you in that last "therefore" to, I think it was Ms. Fisher's, compressed natural gas is somewhat better than coal and petroleum, but it still, especially in its extraction and production, produces methane, and I would like you to consider trying to go electric. Thank you.
All right.
I would agree with that.
Thank you very much. Elizabeth and Dorothy? Go ahead and tell us your name and your general location, where you come from.
I'm Elizabeth Willis, and I'm from Wilsonville, in the Charbonneau District. Thank you, Commissioners, for this opportunity to comment. I am representing the League of Women Voters, we have four members here today, and we came here today to commend the Commission for their action and their support for their statement and resolution regarding climate change. The, I must say, the whereases and the therefores are a bit of a surprise, and I can say with confidence that we support the original statement without any changes. At the very least, we support Commissioner Fisher's language with regarding technologies. But the statements of the whereases seem to be, oh, they feel like they're going to muddy the issue. As a retired communications professional, I've learned that the less you say, the better, and to start sticking in facts and specifics is likely to confuse the issue, it's likely to provide loopholes for folks who want to argue what we see as, as facts, and so I would encourage the Commission to adopt the original resolution. The League, you know, makes a huge effort to raise grassroots support for combating climate change. We support legislation that will protect our country from the physical and the economic and the public health damage that climate change causes, and also to encourage economic growth and health. So we commend the Commission for their astute and forward-thinking position on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Dorothy Atwood, I was introduced by my colleague Lisa Dotto, I live in Lake Oswego, and am one of the co-founders and on the Board of the Lake Oswego Sustainability Network. We too haven't had a chance to see the, the new resolution as, the new whereases and therefores that were suggested by Commissioner Savis. I just wanted to say, yes, we too fully support version one, and in general, would say that being flexible in action rather than specifically citing specifics would be, would be beneficial. Commissioner Savis made an example of compressed natural gas, which is a fossil fuel, and I can say with confidence, we would, we would commend the Commission going away entirely from fossil fuels, so even having that as an example. If you want to do a ver, a new version, I personally, since I haven't had a chance to discuss this with my colleagues, I think Sonia Fisher's suggestions are good by keeping it general, with all due respect to Commissioner Schrader, I, I fully understand where our data comes from, but again, I, I think that less is more in this case, and being simple and in your resolution, and allowing your, your policies to fully flesh out what you want to do. So I think that's it. Just wanted to, I, I want to generally commend you for, for reaffirming your, your support, and it's been great to see this discussion about it in the Commission. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well, back, that's the last one, back to discussion, you know, have you seen the commercial Captain Obvious, you know, people say these obvious things, and I think the, actually every one of these whereases that have been added are pretty obvious. Yes, it's true, it's life-supporting, but it's also destructive, and, and yes, NOx, I was in the automotive industry my entire life, and yes, NOx is bad, carbon monoxide is bad. It just seems to me, it's like the Captain Obvious statement, and in the end, you're right, compressed natural gas, you know, they, they, they use fracking to get that out, which is not something I support, and electrification of cars is, is the best, I mean, I say we leave that bottom one off and get where the whereases, or make some alterations like you suggested, and get as close to the, the main resolution as we possibly can, which I support totally. Oh, Ken?
Yeah, just, not language for this, but just a comment for the general public on two things that are related, that I think sometimes help people rethink this issue. One is that there are now more people employed in green energy jobs than there are in the entire fossil fuel industry. So it isn't as if we're going to lose jobs, it may require people to be retrained, but there are plenty of jobs to, to be made available as we go forward, and look for alternatives to fossil fuels where we can. The second thing is, is that, for those of you who are concerned about national security, and you, you may say, well, what the heck does that have to do with climate change? The number-one threat rated to the United States of America by the United States military is climate change, because of the severe disruption of populations that will subsequently have to move, and then the scarcity of resources to take care of them. We all know what the consequence of that will be in terms of warfare and other problems, so I think I would lean towards supporting the military's position on that. They, generally speaking, seem to be pretty expert on what the general threats are. I'm going to defer to Commissioner Fisher to put the motion on the floor in language that is comfortable for her as the sponsor.
All right.
Yep.
Okay. I move that we approve the resolution affirming Clackamas County's commitment to combat climate change with the following amendment. Under "therefore," the last statement will be, "Support efforts to encourage the use of new lower-emission technologies in public buses such as those operated by transit agencies and school districts."
And I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve a resolution reaffirming Clackamas County's commitment to combating climate changes with amendment as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Thank you very much for coming today. We had a couple...
That was actually an interesting discussion.
Yeah. We had a couple of people show up after the citizen portion, we have Damian Hall and Chris Hayes.
Good morning, Chair Bernard, Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you this morning. My name's Damian Hall, I'm an attorney with the law firm of Baljanic. I'm here on behalf of a client, and I think the timing is fortuitous, given the conversation that you just had. That client is Cypress Creek Renewables, they're a solar energy developer, and they develop projects at utility scale, so multiple acres, not just solar panels on, on rooftops, and they generate clean renewable solar energy, and they sell it to the local utilities. I've given you a little bit of a handout about the two projects that Cypress Creek has gotten approved in Clackamas County, and just wanted to introduce you to the company, as well as say that those two projects are looking, they're looking to break ground on those next year. The other topic I want to address is sort of how the, because I think these are the two first utility-scale solar projects in the county. A discussion that has been, being had with counties statewide is how these type of projects are taxed. The Oregon Legislature passed a bill in 2015 that provided an option to either go through the central assessment process for these facilities, or to pay a fee in lieu of that process, and that's called the Pilot Process, the, so it's like payment in lieu of tax, it's an acronym there. That bill was supported by counties as well as the solar industry, and it just provides an easy-to-calculate way to, to assess what should be paid to the county each year, and it's a, it's basically, you take the nameplate megawatts, which is the size of the project, and you multiply it by $7,000, and you can enter into an agreement to do that for up to 20 years. It's intended to approximate the property tax that would otherwise be required, but it cuts through a lot of the administrative red tape, which is why assessors like it, and it provides some certainty, which is why the solar development industry likes it. You know, it, it is, it's not required of counties to do this, but it's popular, I've negotiated and entered into these agreements with six other counties, where different clients have built projects or are building projects, and, you know, so basically why I'm here today is that piece of legislation that creates the Pilot Process assigns the Board of Commissioners as the decision-makers, so I wanted to just start the conversation, our intention is to work with the county assessor, and come back to you with something more formal to actually look at, but just wanted to, you know, before we show up with the draft agreement, and just identify who Cypress Creek is, and familiarize you a little bit with the alternatives available, and our plan is to, like I said, work with the assessor and come back to the Board sometime later this year.
Great, thank you. I just hope that when they look at solar farms, they look at the soil, and not, you know, we're the breadbasket, and I don't want that breadbasket cluttered with too many solar farms, but, you know, I'm a big supporter, we have a solar farm that we supported at the Enrac, which is just outside of Wilsonville, in, in a piece of property we own, which is a research center. It's fairly large, and I don't exactly, we should one day ask for a report, find out how that came out, how that's working for them, but, so I, I mean, I, I'm a huge supporter of solar, I'm gonna put them on my barn here probably next year, but I'm also concerned that, you know, we're the breadbasket of the region, and we don't want to cover all our fantastic soil with solar farms, can't eat solar. That's about all I can say.
Understood, and there's a robust debate happening at the state level on that.
Yeah, yeah. All right, thank you. Thank you very much for coming. Yes, go ahead. Welcome.
Good morning, Chair Bernard, members of the Commission, my name is Chris Oz, I'm from the community of Damascus. I apologize for being late this morning, surprising as it might be to all of us, I-205 was a parking lot. I just wanted to stop by, I know the, as you're probably all aware, the Damascus Lane property sale is moving forward. I want to thank Laurel and the county staff for, for their efforts in that, it's, it's been nice to see a positive coming out in Damascus, I've been to several community events lately, some of you might be aware of their... Some of you might be aware, they're putting our fire station back together from the small unfortunate little fire we had Easter morning. That will be back online probably in a couple of months. And the property, the design, the sale, I think, should be finalized fairly soon. We've gotten a design that looks like we can use the same design that'll be the Hilltop Station in Oregon City. It will basically drop onto the property, so it'll save significant design costs, and the community is really excited. As I'm pretty sure you're probably all aware, Damascus has not had a history of wonderful and fun news, and they're really excited to see something that can benefit the community happening. And it's been very much in large part because government entities have been willing to work together and come to a solution that everyone could live with. And this is a great one. We have a need, it's going to be filled, and we're really looking forward to it. So I wanted to just take a moment and thank you all again for your support of this and the support for the community and our emergency services. We're, we're going to be, we're going to be a real little community with an actual fire station that's supposed to be lived in.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ken?
Chris, I just want you to remember, you made this statement when there's something that we have to do out there that is not necessarily exactly what you want. Because you know, both know, can't always be on the same page at the same time. But we are trying to do something for Damascus.
If we all agreed on everything, it'd be no fun. Absolutely.
This is true.
If it was easy, it wouldn't be fun.
Yeah.
I just appreciate, you know, I know that this isn't, this isn't how we started out, but we ended up, we ended up somewhere that I think is going to be positive for everyone. And trust me, our little community can use some good news, and this is, this is a great one. People are really excited.
Good.
We're really excited too, and we probably could have got more money for the place, but you know, there's a great public benefit here. We do have a search and rescue that we're trying to find them home. I wonder about the new fires, I mean, the one that you're repairing from the burn might be possibly available, but we're still looking for them, and we'd probably just have given it to you had, had it, I mean, given it to the fire district had we not had a need to figure out what to do with the search and rescue group, which we have literally been working for about six years trying to find a place for them.
I think in my discussions that I've had with the fire department, I think there are solutions out there. They have, they have some facilities I think that are available, and I certainly wouldn't want to put Chief Charlton on the line for my commitment, but I'm pretty sure they see the need, and I, I think there's a solution out there that can be had. So we'll, we'll keep pushing on that, too.
Yeah, I think so too, but I think there was an issue with the, the fire station that burned at the property owner. Was that something to do with that?
Well, the property owner is the civic club, so that's the community itself.
Okay.
Yeah, and so it'll, it'll revert to their control when, when they're not using it for a fire station, but they're excited about that, too. They've got community center, whatever that means. They want to have a barbecue, and I'm all for barbecues.
Well, great.
I'm with you. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. So we're on to the consent agenda.
Okay, today's consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Community Solutions for Clackamas County and the State of Oregon, Department of Energy for Weatherization Services, approval of service contract renewals between Clackamas County and Alpha Energy Savers, Green Energy Solutions, Green Horizon Weatherization, Performance Insulation and Energy Services, Rich Art Family and Energy Comfort and Construction for multiple weatherization projects, approval of amendment number eight to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Agreement with Oregon Housing and Community Services for the transfer of program income, approval of amendment number five to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Two Agreement with Oregon Housing and Community Services for transfer of program income, approval of amendment number two to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Three Agreement with Oregon Housing and Community Services for grant closeout, approval of amendment number four to the intergovernmental agreement with Multnomah County for a public health officer, approval of an agency service contract with Compass Group USA doing business as Bateman Community Living for food services for five Clackamas County Older American Act Nutrition Program meal sites, approval of an interagency agreement with North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, Milwaukee Center to provide social services for Clackamas County residents age 60 and over, approval of an agency service agreement with Clackamas Women's Services for energy shelter and victims of domestic violence. Under our Juvenile Department, approval of a personal service contract amendment and renewal, number two, with the Boys and Girls Aid Society to provide energy shelter services for youth. Under Business and Community Services, approval of a memorandum of understanding between the Local Workforce Development Board, Clackamas Workforce Partnership, and other, others relating to the operation of the WorkSource Clackamas One-Stop Service Delivery System. Under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of a grant agreement with Oregon State Marine Board as part of the Maintenance Assistant Program for fiscal year 1718, and approval of amendment number two to an agreement with NY's Inc. for full coverage mechanical services to maintain facility equipment at North Clackamas Parks Aquatic Park. And that concludes today's consent agenda.
Great. Anyone wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? You can go now. I'm just kidding. Okay, so I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Next is the county administrator updates.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. We have a little bit of time today, so I have some great news to share with you and everybody who's watching. I think you all know, but I think the public should know, that we've confirmed that the legislature intends to provide our requested one and a quarter million dollars for planning for the Clackamas County Courthouse replacement project. The project will be funded with cash at the end of the session bill. Water Environment Services Tri-City Strategic Energy Management Team and crews have just surpassed over 2 million kilowatt hours saved, which is valued over $100,000 in avoided costs. This effort is enough to power 183 homes for a year. We've received some very nice compliments from our customers at our Department of Transportation and Development Public Service Lobby lately. In June, since people have to go to the extra trouble to get a comment form and write these, we know that they are heartfelt. So here they are. "Amazing how everyone is so magnificently pleasant in this mass of paperwork. Thank you, Mardell Mock. Wish Portland was as good as Clacko. Keep up the good work, Bill Rucker. The service is as always great, thanks to all who made this process easy," from Michael Langley. And last week, our Behavioral Health Older Adult Staff hosted a number of experts to speak on social isolation among older adults at its Be the Connection event in Oregon City. And some of the feedback we heard from those attendees, "I have worked with seniors for almost 30 years, and I'm very glad this longtime issue is finally being named and addressed." Thank you. This is one of the best, if not the best, conference I have attended. So well done on all counts. The presenters were all top-notch, and thank you for including the older adults on the panel. And recently, when North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District worked with our Transportation and Development Staff to create and install trail signs at the suggestion of a concerned citizen, we received the following response. "Thanks so much for installing the two signs at Southeast Silver Springs Road and Southeast Evergreen Street along the Trolley Trail. I noticed them a couple of days ago. Know that this was a possibility, the first time I ever made, this was possibly the first time I ever made a request to a governmental body that actually resulted in a goal of mine being implemented. You have given me hope. Thanks so much," from Ron Tellarico. And that concludes my comments today.
Great, thank you very much. And Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Great. Well, Commissioner Humbertson and I had the opportunity yesterday to attend the China International Conference on Trade, Investment, and Education, and I think it was, and you were talking to some of the real important folk up front, I noticed, though. It was the deputy-
Deputy counsel.
Deputy counsel. I was very pleased to see you bonding. That's a good thing. Clackamas County seems to be leading the way with actually an export-import initiative at this level, and I'm really proud of that. I think we're bringing it up to the next step, and I think with Commissioner Humbertson's help, we can move ahead with looking not only at that opportunity, but when I go to the National Association, also taking a look at what other export opportunities there are for our goods and services in this county. They talked about an e-platform that the China Sister City Association is going to be putting together and getting information out to businesses to see if they want to showcase their products in Tianjin Province. So I'm kind of looking, looking forward to that. That was, that was a good day yesterday. Also, I attended the Mount Hood Lions Breakfast with both Commissioner Fisher and Commissioner Humbertson, and that was really fun, and I think you won a turkey.
I did.
Right. Yeah, well, I felt safer knowing you were a crack shot, I have to admit, you know.
They asked a marine to shoot, so what can I say?
I was like, well, this is kind of scary, but anyway, that's okay. In terms of arts, what, are you, no?
I say, I shot the paper, I was telling Jim, I shot the paper turkey and won a real turkey.
A real turkey, yeah, yeah. But it was a little, wasn't it big turkey? It was a medium-sized turkey, so. That was really fun. Had an opportunity to visit and attend the Arts Awards in Lake Oswego, where they go through all the plays they've done for the season, and really give awards out, kind of like the, kind of like their own Tony Awards, only in Lake Oswego, for the various productions. And I had a great Fourth of July, where every year I join with the folks in Lake Oswego Public Library, and we do a book cart routine. We're kind of the highlight of the whole parade, I have to tell you that. We do a book cart routine with all the librarians, and we do things like circle the wagons and the 360, and, you know, all that kind of stuff. And every year, we practice about 15 minutes before the parade starts and hope we're not going to lose, lose hold of our carts, as it won't careen into the, into the audience. But so far, so good. And other than that, I'm looking forward to this week because my grandchildren are coming on Saturday. So I haven't seen them in a while, so I'll be bringing them to work with me on more than one occasion, so you can all experience the joy, okay? And my little Harper is an acquired taste, evidently, according to her English father, so we'll see. In any case, let's go to Arts and Culture Activities in the Counties. The Historic Resource Advisory Board of Lake Oswego would like to invite you to the unveiling of Oswego's Hazalia Agricultural Heritage Trail. Come and learn about the people that have always lived there, walk on a volcano, imagine what it was like to live on a donation land name or pioneer era farmstead. Visit the final resting place of early settlers while enjoying the wonderful scenery in just a four-mile stroll. Learn about the diverse people that helped settle Clackamas County. Saturday, July 8th at Lusher Farm, 12 to 2, free parking and a shuttle from C3 Church from 11 to 3 p.m. Lakewood Theater Company presents Visit to a Small Planet. Imagine if a visitor from another galaxy happened to land on Earth to observe the United States firsthand. What kind of impression would the country, or for that matter, the human race, make on a complete stranger? This is the question posed in Gore Vidal's Visit to a Small Planet, a comedy subtitled as A Comedy Akin to Vaudeville. Thursday through Saturday, July 6th, 7:30 p.m., and Sunday, July 9th, 7 p.m. at the Lakewood Center for the Arts. I'll be hosting the cast party on Friday night at my house, actually. Also, the Sandy Mountain Festival is starting to go on. Over 125 artisans show their wares while entertainment is provided on two stages. Enjoy a mouth-watering treat from one of over 20 booths manned by our local nonprofit organizations. Saturday, July 8th, 10 to 7 p.m., and Sunday, July 9th, 10 to 5 p.m. at Minning Memorial Park. And tonight, I get to go to Clackamas Community College and be one of the walk-ons on their Sherlock Holmes play. So that's going to be really fun. So I'm doing a lot of arts this week between the cast party and acting onstage. It's going to be fun. Okay?
Great. Next, Ken.
Well, since Martha covered most of the same things that I would have covered-
That's okay.
Which is fine. Well, I'm just going to talk about the Fourth of July. I had the opportunity to go to the parade in Canby, and I have to say, that's probably one of the best local down-home kinds of parades in our entire county. It was really enjoyable, got to meet a lot of people, shake a few hands, especially with some of my veteran colleagues, and bring my little red Mustang out for show again, so. And I will leave my comments at that. Thank you.
The dog.
Oh, the dog, that's correct. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Gone to the dogs.
Yeah, I'm gone to the dogs, what can I say? This is Polly. She's looking for an adult-only home with no other dogs or cats. She likes to be the center of attention and would benefit greatly from taking training classes with you. She will need to be secured on a leash or in a fenced yard as she will wander. She loves to go for strolls and would like to take walks around the neighborhood with you. If you're looking for a dog that you can work with, she's your girl. For more information about Polly and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628, or www.clackamas.us/dogs. Thank you.
Great. Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Bernard. I think this last week was, for all of us, a chance to get out and connect with many of our constituents in their communities. I was up at the mountain with, for the Lions Breakfast, had wonderful conversation with a gentleman. I just have to talk about Ray. Ray worked for the Forest Service for years, he worked for FEMA, he got us through the '96 floods. He's 81 years old, and if there is anyone on the mountain that understands transportation roads, the interrelationship between jurisdictional conflicts on road maintenance, it's Ray. So I had the wonderful opportunity of connecting him up with our CPO, Community Planning Organization leaders out there, and to put some of that amazing knowledge and expertise to work. I think we all have stories like that, where we meet amazing citizens in our communities, and we can provide those linkages and connections. Also, Commissioner Schrader and I had the wonderful opportunity to connect with Fire Marshal Klein up on the mountain, and I can tell you, the planning and preparedness and the thinking and the forethought that's going into what's going to be descending upon Oregon on August 24th with the solar eclipse is immense. I want all of us to have the opportunity to talk with our public safety folks, and so I think we will be asking for a short policy session so that we can be briefed on all of the activities. If predictions are correct, 26 through the mountain will be absolute gridlock. And from what the fire marshal had said, this is planning and preparedness. If there's a tsunami, this is a test as to how we will be able to work our transportation processes to get to central Oregon. So very enlightening and important information that we all need to be thinking about. Other places I've been, I was out at the Leland Community Planning Organization, went and toured the area, got quite a lot of information on challenges of, in rural areas with fast speeds, lots of freedom that people like in rural areas, but some serious issues with fatalities on roads and people not stopping, and New Era is one particular area of concern that, that I toured with some individuals and got a firsthand look at where the marijuana grows are. The people that come to testify on Leland Road went through all of that area, was able to get a firsthand view of what citizens are concerned about and frankly not concerned about with the emerging marijuana industry. So that was some very good information. Also, been, was out in Estacada for the Timber Festival, out in Malala for the buckaroo, and I must say that the opening ceremonies of the rodeo on the Fourth of July are incredible. And I don't know that, I was actually moved to tears during the National Anthem, and I don't know that I've ever been moved to tears during the National Anthem at any other event. It was spectacular, so I just want to applaud everyone that has served our country. It was quite moving and very important that we reflect on that, and that, those important aspects of our communities. And also spent time at the Lions Breakfast in Lake Oswego. So it was, it was a tour all over the county, and it's important. And on my journeys, I must say, in talking with folks, that I heard good things about all of our commissioners, and all of us are getting out there and connecting, and I applaud us for that.
Well, great. Of course, I left town. I, every year, we have a family get-together at the coast, except one or two years, so I missed a lot, but it sounds like we're covered. I guess you've said before, that's why we went to five commissioners, so that we had an opportunity to visit the county.
Well, yeah, actually, I kind of feel that way. We kind of, it gives us really more area to cover. It makes it easier because you can collaborate on various- It makes it easier because you can collaborate on various projects. It's a much better, yeah.
Yeah, well, you know, so a great Fourth of July in Manzanita. They also have a community parade. I don't know what the Canby Parade, the attendance was. Was it better than the, the-
Well, there was thousands of people along, literally, along, on, along the route, and I wore out another pair of cowboy boots walking that thing, so.
Well, that's good, because a lot of parades are kind of fading out. I mean, the one in Manzanita, which used to be an hour and a half, was a half hour. Now, they had thousands of people watching, but the parade attendant, I mean, the people in the parade was really low. And, you know, the Canby Parade at the opening of the fair has dwindled quite a bit, and we'll see what happens. Partially because it's getting hotter, maybe that has to do with global warming.
Maybe they should start earlier.
Yeah, start earlier, but you start at noon, you know, and could be 80, 90 degrees already, so people, I used to run a parade in Milwaukee. I ran it for five years, and we had, you know, thousands of people, and we had more people in the parade than watching the parade. And usually, that's true in Manzanita, but this time it was the opposite. I did note that Clackamas Service Center had a fire this weekend, and I, I don't know if they've contacted us, or if there's anything we can do to help. It's not like we have any extra buildings nearby, but they're a huge resource for the homeless, and hopefully, somebody's taken up that, that effort. Have you heard anything?
I haven't, but we can certainly look into it.
Yeah. We should find out who the board members are and see if there's anything we can do to help, temporary shelter or some temporary location, I don't know.
Yeah.
But that's, that's pretty bad, because they're, they're a very, they're a very needed asset in that area, yes.
I did have lunch with, I actually had breakfast with Bill Knox, who's on the board while the fire was happening, and so I knew that it was happening, and then I had lunch with Rich Swift, who said that they are on it and working with Clackamas.
Good, great.
Service Center.
Well, with that-
Can I read something real quick, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, sure.
From the Lake Oswego Story Project, in the dedication area, there's a quote from a brilliant man, Carl Sagan, and it seems apropos to the discussion we had on our resolution today. Quote, "The universe is not required to be in perfect harmony with human ambition," end quote.
And I have to add that I was at Cornell when Carl Sagan was teaching and got to hear him speak on numerous occasions.
Great opportunity.
Yeah, I've got him on my speed dial. With that, we're adjourned.
Then you must be, you must be calling the stars, then, because I don't think he's alive anymore.